Alrighty, it is.
I don't know, what did you say?
Welcome, everybody. Let's call this meeting to order a special meeting of the Board of Directors of the City of Barling. Let's do a roll call.
Aaron Rowe.
Here.
John Manus.
Here.
James Davis.
Yeah.
Savannah Robinson. Ken Colley.
Here.
Bill Young.
Here.
Ron Sherram.
Here.
Alrighty, uh, before we get to everything, the Chair would like to, uh, have a motion. Someone would give me a motion to amend the agenda to include a, uh, public input for two minutes at the beginning and the end.
I'd like to make a motion that we had changed the agenda to allow public input.
Alright, got a motion to have a second.
I'll second it.
Got a second by Ron. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same. Alright, so we're at this time, if there's anybody that'd like to talk about any of the agenda items, uh, on, on today's agenda, you know, you can come up and speak now. Just state your name, who you are, and have at it.
Okay, I'm Rod Blake, Lake Construction, y'all know me. I'm here just to speak for a minute on this borrow issue. I've done a lot of work for RDOT over the years. I built these embankments on this approach and this overpass and these ramps here in Barling. So I know a little bit about how this borrow goes. I don't want to see Barling get shortchanged. Barling still owns that piece of property out there basically as a beneficiary. It's not transferred, it's not been sold. So with that being said, y'all actually should have more input into that borrow, what's going to happen with it. Because I can assure you when it's left, no matter what the spill is now or anything, there'll be issues with that area. When you lower that kind of area twenty feet, there'll be ongoing issues after the fact. You can look at Greenwood, y'all had enough foresight years ago to put this clause in there for these mining permits. Greenwood didn't. Look at it down there, it looks like a bomb went off. Well, that over there is going to be down on basically hard blue shell. You'll have to drill in a telephone line down there before it's over with. It's going to be hard to market it when it's all said and done, but Barling does not need to be shortchanged because you're actually the beneficiary is what I'm getting. If they had sold that to say, me or Rod Coleman or somebody, and then we turned around and wanted to resell it, they would want fifty percent of the profit. Barling should, in my opinion, should not do any less than fifty percent of the proceeds from this sale, whatever it comes out, because in the end, RDOT pays off compacting embankment. So you'll know, you can get the yardage every two weeks in the draws. But it's not fair what's being done with Barling at all on this issue right here. I can assure you when it's over with though, it's going to look completely different out there and it's going to impact some stuff down the road. It needs to be considered. That's just my, I wanted to put that out there because I've been involved in this for a while and I've done big borrows.
Appreciate it. Next.
So one of my biggest concerns with, and I know, I know they need the borrow, they need material over there. Two things, how, how they leave it. Are they leaving it to where it is something that can be developed? Are they leaving just a piece of rock? The other concern is that I don't think you can trust the FCRAs Executive Director or even the committee to approve to help support the water tire and the extra twenty foot that you asked for yesterday. So the only leverage y'all have is, is to make them approve that before y'all approve the excavation. If you approve it first, I don't think you'll get a dime out of them and I don't think you'll have any control. You approve it after you negotiate as how this thing's going to be left, whether it's going to be a lake or what it's going to be. If it's just bare ground, it's, you're not going to develop it. Just not going to happen.
What was said yesterday.
We'll get to that.
I mean, you know, we're listening to them, but we hadn't heard what, what was, what was said yesterday, you know, so I mean, we're kind of.
When we get to the consideration, we can, we can discuss that, yeah.
I mean, we're listening to you, but you know, there's some of us here that hadn't, you know.
They, they pretty much said, well, we're, we're good with participating, but we don't know how much yet. We'll cross that bridge later. That's what they're wanting, cross the bridge later, but it ain't, it ain't going to happen.
Let's hear everybody. I'm sure they got something to say too.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure. So anyway, I, I just wouldn't accept nothing from them until it's in writing, they've approved it and everybody's agreed upon it.
Alrighty, alright. Who'd like to come up and speak next?
For the third time this week, you guys are probably tired of seeing me. My name's Josh Mickel with Mickel Griffin Engineers. I'm here with my partner Nick Griffin to answer any questions that you may have that have come up since our last discussions.
You might have any questions for him, because I'm guaranteeing he's going to get back up when we get to the consideration.
We might have a question after you speak.
Yeah.
But right now, I don't.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Alrighty. Nobody else would like to come up and speak? Let's go to the discussion of the Barling, okay, so the Barling share of cost for water and tower water study. What was asked yesterday, uh, we'll just go straight into it. We went in, they had their meeting, uh, and they discussed having the water study done, but since the City of Barling has to have a state mandated water study done and it's our turn to do it, is that right, Steve? We told them that we wouldn't need a water study and that we would, we would provide that, that's no problem. That would, uh, it would coincide with the study that they wanted to do. The proposal that they gave to the FCRAs for their study included the water study, which came to about eighty-four thousand dollars. I say that to say this, the FCRAs had asked if we would be able to provide twenty percent of that cost, which wouldn't be the total, it wouldn't be eighty-four thousand. If it was eighty-four thousand, that would be sixteen thousand, four hundred, eight hundred dollars, our part for that study. I know it's not going to be the full eighty-four thousand, so our cost would come down from that. So, because these two considerations are kind of linked together, I'm going to go ahead and tell you what was said. The City of Barling asked for the FCRAs to provide, to give us a determination or a, a vote, a motion so that we would cover, the only thing that we really could ask for is the difference in the twenty-foot elevation, uh, for the water tower. So ours is sitting at five hundred, when they borrow and all that, it'd drop it to four eighty. To get us to that four eighty is that twenty-foot difference, which comes to about a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. That's what we asked the FCRAs for, uh, the, and I'm just going to, because we had a discussion with, uh, with Matt and Steve. It all has to do with some legal aspects of why we didn't want to ask for anything more at the time. Because there's some, there's some sticky situations, am I right, Matt?
You're right.
Yeah, so.
As with all things.
Yeah, as with all things, uh, the situation comes down to, let's say, we wanted them to pay for the water tower. They could in turn come back, file a lawsuit against us saying, the only reason you're holding this up is because you want money from us and you're preventing us to make money. They would win that lawsuit and the judge would just basically say, here, you get your permit. You know, Barling, y'all go kick rocks. However, the only thing that we have is the fact that they're lowering the ground over there when they do, do the borrowing and all that, that gives us a grievance because that sets us at, what's the word I'm looking for? The, uh, uh, it sets Barling back, uh, that two hundred thousand dollars.
I mean, it makes our tower more expensive.
Yeah, makes the tower more expensive.
Using the dirt for the borrow pit. They're lowering the level of the dirt, which means instead of needing a hundred and eighty-foot tower, we now need a two-hundred-foot tower, which is going to be more expensive.
Right.
For us.
So then in turn would say, okay, if they told us to go kick rocks, then we would have a leg to stand on to take them to court and say, hey, you've cost us, you know, to have to build a two-hundred-foot tower. But what was said during the meeting, and I will say this, that was the, one of the most smoothest meetings I've ever attended without Daniel Mann being there, okay? It was, it was nice, everybody was cordial, Dean was really acceptable. His board was acceptable about helping us with the difference. We were, and I told him I would bring it to the board today about the, the share of the cost of the study so that we could get to a point of how much that difference would be. But there was no motion of them, uh, it was more of a, an agreement that they want to help us, but they didn't take any action on voting or anything like that, saying, hey, yeah, we, we're going to do it. They, and I told them, since we don't know the cost, I would bring the water study discussion to this board about helping them with that, which I know it's going to be less than sixteen thousand dollars. And then for the borrow pit, they didn't give us an exact, you know, number, because we don't have an exact number of how much that will, how much cost it's going to be. Does that kind of give you an idea? Hopefully that gives you an little bit of idea of where we're at on this process. Now, it all has to do with the water tower, when we need it, how we need it. Me and Steve think it's going to be anywhere, it's probably less than five years, but right around the five-year mark of when we might need that water tower over there.
The comment was made and they asked a question and Dean Gibson asked it pretty much straight. Right now, we're going, we have a five-hundred-thousand gallon storage tank. And we are averaging in our pay to buy the water from Fort Smith is five-hundred-thousand gallons a month. I mean, a day is what it's showing, five-hundred a day. And I made the remark and these gentlemen heard it, that it's out here, not in an industrial-type city, we're hitting about a hundred gallons per person per day in water and about sixty per person per day in sewer. And we know because the population at five thousand matches and that gives you a pretty good guess in what we found before. The other comment I made was, we have, they just sold twenty-six acres plus to Coleman out there. And that's going to be housing. And we have got the housing that Griffin's got down here coming on board. And we have two more plots out there. And I made the point to the trust that when you run the model, and Nick made the same comment after, when you run the models of what we can have, your water demand is how the property is sold. And I put it to point-blank range to the usage of that trust. Guys, if you put it in houses and it's built up, it's going to be here before five years and probably in three, the way if, if everything goes around here. And so the comment is made, that's why they decided that, A, the share of the water study needs to be done. And what you all don't know on all of it is that Nick Griffin worked on the modeling of both Fort Smith and the surrounding areas. And the water line that is out there along Frontier Road was put in as a result of work that he did in, in the past about the modeling and the simulation. The difference is, is that we have the mapping that's already done on the sizes of the water lines here in town, where the valves are, where the blowoffs are, and where the connections are and how to get under fifty-nine highway, where the turns are to do, where you go to make it. And we know that the sewer chase cannot, we won't use it, it's not used now. And you can clean one of them and put the other water line in at another location and we'll have enough to circle and build. But the first thing you have to do is run the survey that goes into the state of Arkansas about your future plans and where you're going and what you need. And this is a way to get it done. The other thing is, if you think about it and five thousand people or the equivalent of five thousand people require another half million gallons. And then I made the comment, and I have talked to Carl Gethkin about this, about hooking on to the forty-eight, putting the valve in and putting a meter in, and the day that it comes up that you can turn on, you'll have, be able to feed both directions, because we can do that now through Moody Road. And you'll be able, and when they do work and maintenance on their system, we can feed and they circulate water for them. And this will solve another problem in loops and you need the loops for reliability and to allow them, the city, who provides to all of us, and they have to work on Moody Road, we can still get, or over-owned by the, uh, the old highway over there at the main valve. We can still get water to back way. And this is what you're trying to do, is to make sure that you've got it for fire and consumption, and that consumption will be here and my guess is probably less than five years. And that means that this stuff has to be done because the lead time to get a tower designed and get one built is about two years. The design's not the problem. The fabrication and getting the thing erected and bidding it out of the system is one of them.
So my question is, how long would it take for us to get this study completed? Because I'm under the, I'm under the impression that they're wanting to start and all that by first of January.
Oh, yeah.
The digging and all that.
If we, if we get, um, for the water study, we want to start immediately.
Okay.
We're ready to go. Um, and, and just so you guys know, the way that that will work is is we'll take the GIS data, um, that you guys already have on your existing system and we'll put that into a specific water modeling program to build a functional model of the system. And we'll, we'll prove that out against current conditions and against existing power flows that you've got from, from, from the system. And then we can run that through different cycles to look at different types of growth rates and also different types of growth, residential, commercial, industrial. And do that with your input and guidance from the city to say, what kind of growth do you expect? And what's that, what kind of infrastructure do you need? And what's the priority order of that, as well as coming up with a, a list of, of projects with our opinion of probable construction costs, um, so that you can start to budget for that as well.
So how, how long would this study take or be completed?
It'll probably take three or four months.
Three or four months?
I was going to say six, but I was being a little more conservative.
I have a question. Let's assume that this water study comes out and they, and the water, water study says seventy-eight years. And we think it's going to be five. Is it ma, are we mandated by their study or what we think?
It, it would be by, I believe by what, what, we could go by what we think. I mean, if we decided we needed the water tower before the big growth spurt hits. I'm, I'm, I'm all about getting infrastructure before the actual stuff hits because if we, if we're behind, then that's going to, that's going to affect, that's going to affect construction and all that.
I'm going to tell you this, I've been on this for ten years. I've been watching that property out there sit and nothing's happened. I mean, not, nothing. So, you know, and, and we're talking about holding up, you know, the interstate project, getting, you know, things crossed here, you know, I mean, if we, if we don't do this dirt pit, they're going to get it somewhere else. Bottom line. I mean, so, you know.
Well, the money, here's the thing, the money goes into the till.
Yeah, still money, money goes into the till.
We, we had a talk yesterday and we still don't know anymore than what we did at the meeting the other night about the money situation or anything else. And what's going to happen is it's going to slip away and then we're just out, irregardless.
We're out, if we weren't going to get the money for the project.
If we weren't going to get the money, I mean, but who's to say we're not going to get the money? They haven't said that.
That's still a question that's not answered yet.
Right. And I mean.
We really can't make a decision on that until we.
But they're wanting us, some of these people are wanting us to make a decision to hold this project up and some people are wanting us to go ahead with this project, you know, I mean.
You're, you're not going to hold it up. You're not going to clarify.
Well, oh, well, I mean, well, wait a minute, yeah, well, y'all are wanting us not to pass this borrow pit thing.
Well, I just want you to force the FCRAs to come up with the agreement that y'all need.
Well, yeah, I understand that, I understand that, but that, that's a city thing. I mean, I don't, I don't see where. Okay.
You have all the leverage right now, I mean, because you did have the foresight to implement a mining situation.
Right.
How does the city have the leverage? That, that's my question as the lawyer. How does this, how does the City of Barling have the leverage over that?
Because you have a mining restriction in the city limits. And that's Barling's property out there as a beneficiary. It had never been transferred, it ain't been sold.
Well, it's not our, it's not Barling's property, it's the FCRAs property.
There you go.
They sold it to me and Steve, just for example. If, just for example, if we owned it and we turned around and said, we're going to sell it to ERC, the FCRAs come to us and say, alright, we'll agree to let you sell. And that's what they do to everybody now. But we want fifty percent of the profit.
If you own.
If, if we owned it and we were going to sell it to ERC, they want fifty percent of the profit.
What is the legal basis for that, for them getting fifty percent of the secondary sale from y'all?
They've already done it to.
To ERC. I'm not asking if they've done it before, I'm saying, what is the le, if you all bought that corn?
They call, they call it speculating. Well, they're speculating.
It's speculations.
That's right. And they don't have, they haven't developed it. They're trying to just sell it and make money off of it. Ken Scholmar.
It has, I think it has to do with development in the contract or something. And when they sell the property, they ask them, you have to redevelop or develop to land.
Three or five years you've got to do your development.
So you have to develop it yourself. You just can't run in and buy it to turn around and, and flip it.
Right.
And make a profit. That's what you're talking about.
No, no. Ken Scholmar and his group bought that piece out there where ERC just bought it in the Mazor. Okay, a couple of the members of the group passed away. Well, he got, where he was in bad health, so he decided he was going to sell it to ERC because he just couldn't push it forward. Had every intention, had design. And then when he decides to sell it, Daniel Mann comes up to him and says, okay, we'll let you sell it, but we want fifty percent of the profit. And that's what they did to them.
Had they developed it at that point?
No. No.
It still hadn't been developed?
No.
Okay, that, that's what I'm saying. If you buy it and develop it and then you sell your interest.
Yeah, that's different.
You don't have to share anything.
But this is sitting out here and they just found a bag of money on the ground, basically, is what it amounts to, if you think about it. And that's what's happened out here. It wasn't ever set aside for a borrow pit or anything like that. But Barling has the leverage to negotiate. I'm not saying anything, they're not, you're not going to hold up the project. I can promise you, that material's coming off that right away, right there. They're not going to haul twenty-two thousand dump truck loads of material around there. It's coming from right there.
But they can't do it unless.
Unless, unless we, unless we approve it, then you, then you ain't going to do it.
Okay, okay.
You just have control of.
Okay.
You all have that control right now.
So if we don't grant the permit to do it, if the city says no, we're not granting the permit, then RDOT can go and purchase fill from Alma or Mountainburg or Greenwood.
The contract, it's up to the contractor.
Now, let me finish my question. Am I correct that if they don't get it from that site because we say no, RDOT will then go purchase dirt from somewhere else?
The contractor will go purchase dirt from somewhere else.
Right. So the money doesn't go, they will, they will buy it and RDOT will pay for it and the money doesn't go into the FCRAs, of which we're a beneficiary?
That's right.
Okay.
If they don't buy it from the FCRAs.
Right. Okay, so why wouldn't we allow them to take the dirt, pay the FCRAs, of which we are one of four beneficiaries? Why would we get rid of that money that would go into the trust and belong to one of the four beneficiaries as opposed to making RDOT go buy it somewhere else?
Because I don't believe that money would ever make its way back here.
Right.
I don't believe the money would ever make its way back here.
Well, but I mean, you're speculating right now.
And you're dividing it amongst four entities.
Well, but here's what I'm saying. My whole issue with this is, the way I'm looking at it, is our interest in it is the tower, correct? That's Barling's interest. The only interest Barling has in that is the tower. That's the whole reason that we're talking about this tower thing.
That's why we're here tonight, right?
Well, the tower.
Twenty feet.
Well, that, that's what we're here for tonight.
The tower should have been a whole separate issue to begin with. It, it shouldn't even been impacted by the borrow.
There we go.
The tower was already identified years ago, so actually this borrow site shouldn't have nothing to do with that tower issue.
But the tower's going on the borrow pit, right?
But they're, they're tying it together though. That's where, that's where we're at right now.
Yeah, they're move, they, they want to move it, um, is it to the south or to the east?
South and west.
To the south and west.
Hey, who is, let's not use pronouns.
I'm sorry.
Who is "they"?
F, the FCRAs.
Wants to move the tower.
The tower site, just to the, go ahead, yeah.
As we were looking at a potential borrow location, um, it came to our attention that there was a, a previous master plan, priorities list that had indicated a water tower on the site that we're interested in.
Which is the borrow pit site.
Which is the borrow site, yes. So part of our due diligence, um, in looking at the borrow site was to look at possible alternatives that were at the same elevation. So the location of the borrows, of, of the borrow site adjacent to Brown's Lake Road, where the five-hundred-thousand gallon water tank was indicated on maps from 2010 to 2014, was at an elevation of four hundred and eighty. We've identified that even after full development of the borrow site, we can maintain on the same property a four hundred and eighty elevation by sliding it down and, or to the south and to the west by approximately a thousand feet, thereby not impacting the City of Barling when they have to go build water tank. It'll still be at four eighty, where it was when it was planned in 2010 and where it will be after the borrow site's complete. Because we can take it and move it from where the, the borrow site was adjacent to Brown's Lake and move it to the corner of the property where we'll still have a four eighty elevation remaining.
Okay, so you're saying that if they move the tower from the original site to this new site, basically we don't have to get a shorter, a taller tower.
Correct.
We'll still be at four eighty.
But there'll be a thousand yard.
But the base, the base of the tower we have up there is five hundred elevation on the hill up there by Ken Bowens Ranch.
Okay.
And it's a hu, it's six sixty-five, six sixty-five to the overflow, okay, the top. So you, if you, it's a hundred and sixty-five feet, okay? The bulb is in the, with the water is in about the last thirty-seven feet or whatever of it, okay? In order to have that, if you're coming from four eighty, you got to have, for that same height, it's at the el, true elevation, you got to have the extra twenty feet to get it up in the legs to have so that the bulb will be at the same height.
Okay, from what you and I have discussed, my understanding of the issue is, right now if we build the tower, that is the tallest piece of property out there. And we can basically build a tower that would be a hundred and eighty feet and it would match the tower out here by Mayo.
That's right.
If they dig down twenty feet.
Or if, if the location is different.
If they dig down twenty feet in this borrow pit, we now have to have a two-hundred-foot tower, correct?
Same difference, yeah.
Okay. And so the issue is, we have to pay, at, at, right now, we would have to pay with that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars cost to the cost of a tower right now to get it to two hundred feet. Maybe double that in the next three years based on the cost.
And you, and when you're up there and when you look at the, the same tower and this, pick you out, okay? This floor is elevation, it's elevation four eighty, okay? Now, it's sitting up there right now at elevation five hundred and it is a hundred and sixty-five feet tall, okay? If you're going to keep that same thing and the elevation is dropped down to four eighty for the base down here, to have that same elevation, you got to go from four, you got a hundred and eighty-five feet to go to six sixty-five.
I'd, I'd like to input that, I, I think the comparison to a five-hundred-foot elevation. I'd, I'd like to input that, I, I think the comparison to a five hundred foot elevation, um, is, is really arbitrary. The existing tank is at a five hundred foot elevation on the west side of town. There is no five hundred foot elevation on the property in question today. If you were to go build a tower there today, you would be building it at four eighty. So you're gonna have to build the extra twenty feet whether the borrow site happens or not. What we've been able to, uh, to do in our grading plan by trying to thoughtfully plan out how we were going back to natural grades at the edge, is we've been able to reserve a four hundred and eighty elevation at the southern edge of the property, so that any future site will not be any lower than what it would be if it was to be built on that site today. So yes, we are removing twenty foot of material at the deepest point on this site, but there is still a point at the, at the natural high on the south, southwest corner of the property where we can maintain a four eighty and thereby not have any additional cost for the city.
No additional cost by moving it.
No additional cost for the height of the tower.
And you can guarantee that.
But there be a, but there be a.
To Greg's comment, you may have, you may have some additional lines.
Yeah, this.
Be put, maybe an extra five hundred foot of line, and it may not, because the way they're, went south on Church and then north on Browns, and you won't have to make that north on Browns Lake anymore.
You're shaking your head no, Steve, tell, tell me what your thing is.
Well, that's what I was saying, the lines, there are additional costs.
Okay, alright.
There are additional costs. So, a- and that's my whole point in this, the trust is wanting y'all to go ahead and issue a permit. They wanna guarantee they can do what they're doing, but they don't wanna give y'all a guarantee that they're gonna help in additional cost. All they wanna do is tell you, oh yeah, we're, we'll be glad to help. No, make them say, we're gonna give you so much money to go towards additional cost. At that point, then, you know, a- approve the permit.
Well, in that event, we sue, in the event we go to them and say, because of the borrow pit, because we gave you a permit to do that, we have had to move, we have had to move our tower southwest, correct? So many certain feet. It now is costing us more money to run lines to that, because we gave you the permit, we went to you at the meeting on October the, what was yesterday?
Nine.
On the ninth, and we told you that we were gonna have to move the tower, it was gonna be an increased expense. We wanted to get your ideas on if you would be willing to help offset the expense of that. Basically, you scratch our back, we'll scratch yours.
I'm, I'm saying make them scratch yours first.
Well.
I'm, I'm saying you deal with it on the front end of it and we don't have to worry about a lawsuit on the back end.
That's right, that's right.
Well, but what you don't, but what, what happens is though, let's say we stall, and we say, no, we're not gonna give you the permit, and they say, okay, fine, we don't get the permit, contractor will go get the dirt somewhere else. Now you've got the same lot that's not worth any more or any less, and we're in the same spot, but we had an opportunity to put anywhere between five and seventeen million dollars.
That's never been proven, I mean, that's, that hasn't been agreed on either, so that money to me isn't anywhere, because they haven't agreed to put that i- in, in something to make sure that, that the beneficiaries get it, we all know how to deal with it.
Or we get a lawsuit put on us by the F C R A saying that they are able right now to sell, sell the dirt on their property, it's their property. They wanna sell the dirt off of it to R D O T and make anywhere between five to seventeen million dollars, depending on how many, how much it is per square yard. Barling is not letting us do that, and they're being arbitrary in it, and Judge, we're asking you to order us to allow to have the permit to dig.
Not until they guarantee the extra cost to build this water tower is gonna be absorbed by the F C R A.
So where's the five to seventeen million coming in, 'cause what they're needing?
I, this is what I was told, and these are where I'm getting these numbers, I was told that there's, I was told there was four hundred and forty thousand cubic yards.
Four hundred and forty thousand yards they need for a fill, and they pay a dollar a yard.
Okay, that, that.
Four hundred and forty thousand dollars, maybe a dollar fifty a yard.
Okay.
That's way different than what I was being told.
Where were those numbers, I mean, I'm getting, that's what I'm saying, I'm getting numbers from somebody who was telling me between five and six.
So what's, so what's your price, I mean, you're the one, get the dirt, what, what's the, the number on it?
We're selling dirt right now for a dollar fifty a yard. That's the contractor come dig it and, and load it.
So you're talking about at what you're selling it for, that's six hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
That's if they use all of it from right there.
Okay.
There's stuff on other, they need, they need two hundred and fifty or two hundred and sixty on this side of the river. They need about another hundred or so on the other side of the river, they might not even get the other side of the river from this side.
It's not near the money that's being spoken of.
Yeah, it's not near what you're talking about.
Okay, I mean, that's fine, I mean.
And that's what I'm saying.
A dollar is a dollar is a dollar, if we're talking six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so we're still back to the same point regardless of the price. And that is, you either let them do it, or you don't let them do it. If you don't let them do it, then to me, would you agree, that means that the F C R A will get no money from that lot for the dirt?
Yeah.
So, so we get nothing either now or forever if we te- if we tell them no. If we tell them yes, that money goes into the trust, of which we are a beneficiary. Now, will we ever see any of that money, that remains to be seen. But I'm just trying to weigh the pros and the cons of either granting them the per- permit or not granting them the permit.
So the, the, the money to me that you need to worry about is the extra money you're gonna spend on this tower. Not the money you're gonna get from the F C R A when they.
I, I, I agree with that.
But he's telling me there won't be any extra money.
You're gonna have infrastructure.
The height of your tower is the height of the tower.
Still gonna have to stretch out another thousand feet of, of water line, and, and there's gonna be a cost involved in it over and above what it would be if it was put in the other part.
So, here's, here's what was, it, it's of my opinion, when we, when I talked to Dean and them at the meeting, their board members were shaking, yes, we'd be more than happy to help with the difference in, in, in the deal, but they didn't do a vote, not all the board members were there.
Get some besides a head shake.
So, I mean, they were shaking, but Dean, Dean was saying yes.
They're writing all day, all day long.
Why is time of the essence, Mr. Mickle?
Because if, if you don't get that.
Mr. Mickle, I just want, you were saying times of the essence, we need you to do it and do it yesterday.
I'm sorry, the, uh, the, the bidding let, uh, yesterday, um, for the project, um, it's an immediate task order contract to start for clearing and to begin, uh.
If this wasn't all agreed to though by, by everybody, why was bidding already let out? That, I mean, at first blush, it seems to be premature.
The contractors have now taken it on their own risk to price and source material, right? And so they were looking for guarantees about where they can source and get the material, because the immediate task order contract is expected to issue a, a notice to proceed for clearing activities on the move first.
How much was R D O T going to pay or is going to pay, assuming they were able to use the borrow pit? What would there be the price per square yard?
I don't know that.
They don't, they don't.
It's not R D O T.
Huh?
It's not.
R D O T does not pay for the.
The contractors that bid on the project, they take it upon themselves to locate this borrow, and then they assume, as a contractor doing large embankments like I've done, you assume for the worst, you bid for, you bid hoping for the best, but you assume for the worst.
So how, do we know how much?
You don't go in with one site.
Do we know how much the contractors were planning to pay per yard for that four hundred and forty thousand?
They keep that very close to the best, because we were talking multiple contractors and they were all making their own individual bids. And once the bids are into R D O T, we don't see that level of detail.
The leverage with your site is it'll all be off-road equipment moving that embankment. Any other site is twenty-two thousand dump truck loads, I can promise you, as a contractor, it's coming off that site. Y'all have the leverage right now to negotiate your best interest.
We have to assume that we're not gonna.
With the water tower and the borrow.
We're not gonna, we're gonna have to assume that we're not gonna see any of that six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. I just wanna guarantee that this water tower, because of all this, isn't gonna cost the city a nickel more than it would be if it was put on where the borrow pit is now.
Those lines to extend to that water tower, you can ask these men right here, those aren't normal lines.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, I wanna guarantee that that's gonna be took care of, and it's not gonna cost us later on down the road, uh, be- because we shook our hand and we didn't get something on paper.
And then the insurance stipulates that their whole goal is to invest in infrastructure. I mean, what, it's not like they're flooded, they're just, and they sit right there and it's told, and both, and these two men heard it yesterday, nineteen million dollars worth of assets.
That's right.
Millions in the bank, just sitting on it.
Nineteen million dollars.
So y'all have, this is y'all's time with this borrow, I can promise you, it's coming off this site.
I, I just wanna add one more point of context as we're talking about the lines, um, so that, that twenty-ten, twenty-fourteen plan that we referenced, um, was, was a spaghetti diagram on, on the, on the property with some, some priorities and some linear foot cost of line that were added. That included a twelve inch line that, that extended from H Street to the, to the R D O T right of way, down R D O T right of way, back on the Church Street and connected to Highway fifty-nine, with an additional twelve inch line that went from that southernmost point along Church Street north to the Browns Lake site. So that, that plan also included a bunch of cost for lines, um, so, so the comparison point already has quite a bit of linear footage of lines included. So, no, Mr. Manis, I cannot say with one hundred percent certainty that there's not gonna be any additional cost, but from what we saw from that twenty-ten, twenty-fourteen map and what we see today.
Minimal.
Baseline is, is that it should, should be about even.
And that's what the water study will help us identify, we'll be able to put those lines and the tower in this, in the master plan, we'll know what those costs are.
And that's, that's, that's really important for the city of Barling, because you guys can go request from the F C R A to reserve those easements now. So even if you choose, even if the study says that it's gonna be seven or eight years, you go, you go reserve the easement now, you've got the capability to come back and do it. And then the city has the opportunity to do that at any point that you choose to do, and you can fund it, right? So that's, that's, that's kinda the whole purpose of the water study.
Rod, what did you mean when you said it's coming off that, that dirt's coming off that site?
I can promise you, the, the difference in trucking twenty-two thousand loads versus off-road equipment, it ain't even apples and oranges.
You, at the off-road, i- in a, in a double axle out there, you can have eighty-eight to eighty-nine, ninety thousand pounds. But they're gonna have to build the roads, that's a, that is guaranteed muck.
I can tell, it's, it's just much cheaper.
And, and, and they, they, uh.
Okay, okay.
They're gonna, they're gonna get it from there.
Sixty, fifty-eight thousand pounds.
If they gotta go that mile and get on the highways.
Highway.
I, I get that, I get what you're saying now. So them, them being the contractors, they are really wanting to take it from that site right there, 'cause it's gonna be so much cheaper.
I guarantee, because that dirt right there, that off-road dirt is worth three, four times more than truck dirt to them.
Because they save all the gas and the trucks and everything else.
You have no traffic control, you don't have all these trucks to deal with, none of that.
Okay.
It's a blessing to them, that's why I'm saying.
But for them to take that dirt requires us to issue the permit.
That's right.
If we issue the permit and they take that dirt from the site, which would be ideal, it's going to mean that we have to move our tower, which is going to, it, which is gonna require more expense to the city of Barling.
That's right.
Not necessarily in terms of the height, I was led to believe up to this time, up to this point, we're talking about the height of the tower. But after what Mr. Mickle said, what we're really talking about is not essentially the height of the tower, we're talking about the transmission lines that it would take to get the water from the tower or from the forty-eight inch line.
Yeah, the forty-eight, yeah.
Whatever, right?
Right.
That, that's really what we're talking about now.
If nothing else, you should ask them to guarantee that they will pay the difference in the distance.
Well.
The cost of the distance.
Absolutely.
Cause that's expensive.
Well, yeah, instead of, we were, we were prepared to talk about the difference in this distance.
Yeah, the heights, the heights are same.
We're really talking this distance.
The heights are same in the two locations, so that's not an issue.
Right.
It, it's the.
It's the transmission line.
Yeah, it's putting it somewhere else where you gotta put the transmission lines in, and that's some, I mean, that's some hard rock dirt out there, that's not gonna be cheap.
But the difference is the height, the base of the tower, draw it real convenient, okay? The base of the tower that's there now is at elevation five hundred. The water in the top is at six sixty-five, that's true elevation, that's a hundred and sixty-five feet, okay? Place that we're gonna put it at four eighty, if that's the base, and you gotta go to six sixty-five, that's a hundred and eighty-five feet. That's where the height of the legs is, where your base is you're coming from, if you're gonna have the same bulb and the same, not counting the lines.
Okay, that, that just, I'm saying, that conflicts with what they were saying.
So, so Steve.
Because they're saying that between the original site.
The original elevation is gonna be the same.
And this site, they're saying there is no.
Minus twenty feet.
They're not though, the original elevation up there is five hundred.
You're correct, Steve, the original elevation up there is five hundred, but that doesn't matter, because on the site that we're talking about today, as it currently stands, there's not an elevation of five hundred to go build a tower.
I understand that, that's why.
The elevation that we planned to build the tower on in twenty-ten was at four eighty. So it, you're gonna have to incur the, the twenty extra feet of cost, whether you do a borrow pit or.
Whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
What is the highest elevation on, on the other side of fifty-nine, naturally right now, close to fifty-nine?
On the east side of fifty-nine?
On the east side of fifty-nine, it's about four eighty. Same rate as the existing.
It's somewhere between four eighty and four eighty-four, um, just on the other side of the street up further, but.
Yeah, so the, the only other additional cost that nobody's talking about is, this sixty acres is now gonna be down to what you, what engineers and contractors, when they bid a job, is gonna call rock. It's, it's gonna be hard shell, nothing that you can just dig, you can't just take a backdoor trackle out there and just dig your ditches. So all the lines that are going through this now, and here's, here's kinda the difference in the cost of digging a trench. The cubic yard to dig that trench with just dirt, you're gonna be looking at thirty or forty dollars a cubic yard to dig that trench. Whenever a contractor's pegging it, so he's throwing his water lines, whatever, and then, when it's rock, that price goes to two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars per cubic yard.
And then you gotta figure your backfill.
Yeah, the backfill's all basically the same as whatever it is, but digging it, you, now you've got sixty acres, wherever you put this and wherever that line goes to, you're digging a trench through rock.
And that's just for the lines to get from the new water tower to wherever they need to get.
That's for whatever lines are in that section.
Exactly, I mean, that, that.
But it's due to the value of that piece of property to remove the dirt on it.
Well, you know the hillside there as you go into Greenwood?
That mess out there.
That's what it's gonna look like.
Called the curb.
They dig a hole, now if they were to dig a hole and leave you a big old lake, you wouldn't have this. You, but now you're gonna have sixty acres, this is all made to drain them off, correct in that? You've got sixty acres of solid rock. I'm assuming they're keeping overburden to put back on it, you know, so it'll grow stuff, but then right underneath that, you have solid rock.
It won't be much overburden.
There will be zero people that are gonna buy that and develop it, until you get enough fill on top of it where you can dig your lines in that.
What Steve and Rod are talking about is we can verify what we did when we had to do the sewer diversion for the interstate down there. We got into this rock down there and it is unbelievable.
I had to shoot that down there on the south end. I can tell you where there's a site like this we're talking about right now, and it involved this right here, Jensen and Watts had that middle piece of the construction on this interstate. They borrowed off Chad Colley down there at the far end on the left as you're going down Chad Colley, the last piece. It was, they took everything off of it and left some pieces of solid rock like this right here, and put six inches back on it, because that's all that was available. And this out here doesn't have much on it either, it goes straight to the shell. And that down there, Justin Green and his partners bought it, and now they're down there having to look at shooting every utility into it, the cost is enormous. And once you do that, but that's here and there, you know, just don't get, all I'm saying is, and I, I wanna ask one more thing why these men are here. If there was, say, a, say, with the F thirty-five program, a lot's fixing to happen around this city, including Barling, because of Fort Chaffey's proximity. Say you had a large project and y'all are set for it right here along this twenty-two frontage and stuff. Say, would you be able to support the water at all to some of these size projects that are being?
Not, not, a- as soon as they go, we will probably have, within two years, if they had the project, you'd have to have the water.
I've seen projects that we bid before go away because the water wasn't available. If y'all don't get that water tower sooner than later, some of these people that have to have a big water need, and they're, and that's coming. If it's not available, they won't wait on it, they'll go to the next person that's offering them economic development, a piece of free ground. They'll go to the next person that's offering them economic development, a piece of free ground. With that water tower, I'm just saying, it's a, it's a big, a big incentive to some companies.
That is the reason that we put the third pump in several years back up there because the Chamber of Commerce got ahold of us about a project out there that would need the water that we would have to pump out. And that's the reason the third pump is down there in that co- that block house, sitting right there on Mayo Drive.
Will that twenty feet take that down to rock? Do we know that that's rock at twenty feet?
I've already drilled it up back when I had the.
Okay, so even if, let's say that the city agrees to do what y'all are saying and basically we want some kind of assurance in writing from the trust that if we permit this and allow that to be dug from that borrow pit and they take it, it's going down to rock anyway. We want it in writing that they help us, we're still gonna be at rock, right, whether, I mean, the only way it's not gonna go down to rock is if we don't permit it.
If there's any additional incurred cost of extending that tank out, they should absorb that cost.
You're saying they're gonna have to blast through rock to do it?
Yes, you'll have to shift that in.
Whether it's blast or whether it's rip. So it's considered rock if a certain size excavator can't just.
We need, we need.
Then it's called rock.
Why don't we just get this water study here?
Here, let's, let's do this real quick. So we've done the discussion of the wa- of the, the share of the cost for the water tower and the water study. Uh, if you guys would like to make a motion to help share that cost, and I think we've agreed to about twenty percent of that cost. That's just, we, we're gonna do the water study, but it's for the rest of the study that goes along with the water study. So we, we were gonna give the twenty percent of that cost.
I'll make a motion that we absorb twenty percent of the cost of the water study for the water tower and the water study together.
All right, got a motion, do I have a second? Got a second? All right, roll call vote please.
Aaron Rowe?
Yes.
John Manis?
Yes.
James Davis?
Yes.
Ken Colley?
Yes.
Bill Young?
Yes.
Ron Sherram?
Yes.
All righty. So now it comes down, what would you guys like for me to do on the uh, the permit of the, do we, do we wanna do this? Do we wanna hold it up? Do we wanna?
I don't want issue to prevent unless we get a guarantee that they're gonna absorb that extra cost to move in the water tower.
The transmission lines?
Yeah. Whatever's involved in it.
Let's say they do that, and let's say they agree in writing to bear the cost of that, and we give them the permit to dig that. That means that sixty acres is still going down to rock, right?
Yeah.
I mean, which.
They're gonna take the dirt, yeah.
Which from what I hear is not a good idea, right?
I think you're better off telling them to leave you a lake when they get down, instead of leaving you sixty acres that.
Flatland.
That can't be developed.
Because then you'll have a sixty, sixty acre rock pit, right?
Or a lake, rock quarry, rock quarry, that somebody may choose to build a subdivision around because of the lake.
Right on the corner of fif- right on the corner of fifty-nine and twenty-two.
Well, sure, I mean, yeah.
Well, not on the corner. If they dig deep, they don't have to take that big a footprint. If, if, if you say leave me a lake, you know, leave the water.
But they're only gonna get down twenty feet before they hit rock, right?
They're, they're hitting rock.
Hit rock within six inches. It's hitting shell. Three and four foot, probably.
Yeah, about four foot. Rod and I has dug all over that when I.
I understand, that's why I'm asking you, what's it gonna take to build a lake to get down? Can they get, is that what they need, four hundred and forty thousand square yards?
So that, that blue shell is nothing to these guys. They have the equipment that will dig that or they'll shoot it and it'll loosen up.
And they're fine with taking that?
Oh yeah, they know that's what they're hit.
Okay.
That's what they're after.
So you're saying go deeper instead of wider, don't use the whole sixty acres?
If you're approving it as far as for future development in the city of Barling, you're better off saying then you leave us something that holds water. And, and you slope the sides, you make it something that's actually usable to whether it be y'all in a park or whether it be a developer that wants to build around a.
So basically, so basically what we need to do is go to the F-C-R-A and say, hey, there's some stipulations that we would like to have whenever you go and have the contractors dig this.
Be honest with you, the contractors would also probably rather go deep than spread out over.
They don't like spreading out. They'd rather get it out of a hole, I can tell you.
Help them stay in a smaller area.
That's pretty much what we're, we're at right now, is that we need to go to the F-C-R-A, ask them, hey, if we allow this permit, will you incur the cost of the lines that it's gonna take since we're having to go through rock? And also, when you're digging that in our area, that we either, we get it to where it's not only just marketable, cause I hate that word marketable, cause you can market, you know, you know, solid rock cliff or something, but make it developable to where it can be developed into something that someone can buy and actually util- utilization.
I think that's a good question. So what is the best, to have a pit or to have a sixty acre site that's developable in your opinion? Because if you look at other properties up at F-C-R-A, first Baptist Church, they're having to fill a pit back in, which is exactly.
Right.
Develop their property, they're gonna bring the drill back to fill it in.
Yep.
And I think you guys have got a property you're filling back in too, right? So I mean, I don't know the answer to that, I think that's a question.
But I also think that that's a question for, for the landowner about how they, how they wanna leave and, and what their preference is for what's developable and what's marketable.
And, and, and the landowner would be the F-C-R-A at this point in time, am I right by saying that?
And I think, and I think that there's pros and cons to both approaches, right, to, to leaving it in a, in a, in a, a, a small area and also to expanding it. If you look at this particular piece of property, especially between the twelve-inch high, high-pressure gas line that's on the north side of the proposed borrow site and the overhead electric lines that are on the south side, right, you have quite a bit of topography in that area and not a good entrance off of Highway fifty-nine. So part of the intention with spreading out the borrow site, and I'm, and, and I'm using very specific language by calling it a site and not a pit, right? By spreading that out, the contractors don't like it as much, right? But that's okay because, yes, the deepest cut is about twenty feet, but in many areas, you're only cutting five feet, right? And you're staying in the brown weathered shale and you, you'll be able to bring overburden back in, that's not gonna be a hindrance to further development. And so I, I think that you can talk about, hey, we need to go put restrictions on it and do this and do that, but, but I don't think that that's ultimately. It's in the eyes of the beholder and who's gonna be purchasing that property in the future.
So it comes down to that, our vote right here determines whether or not they get the dig. It does, I mean, until we talk to F-C-R-A and say, hey, how's this site gonna look like if we do allow it? How's the site gonna look like? Is it gonna be marketable? How are they gonna dig? Are they gonna dig a lake? Are they gonna dig a, make it flat all the way across?
So who is it that approached the F-C-R-A about this borrow pit?
We, we've had, we've had multiple contractors uh that are bidding on the R-DOT project.
And they bid on it based on them using this dirt and not based on them using this dirt?
No, they bid on worst case, I promise you, you don't go in with just one source.
So they're bidding on it in the sense that they're gonna have to hit rock?
Oh yeah, they know exactly what's over there.
Yeah, they drilled it, they know what's there.
Uh, Mayor, if you would mind, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion, and, and if y'all don't like it, it ain't gonna bother me. I'd like to make a motion that we allow them to use the borrow pit for moving the soil to the other location.
All right, so you're, make a motion to?
He's not done, he's not done.
Okay.
And that, one item is that we be provided the extra cost for moving the tower and the transmission lines to the different location than what they have. Second is that they are to leave a moderate-sized lake. Now, I don't know exactly what a moderate-sized lake is, but I will finish that up with item number three. And provide plans on what is left and the possible uses for that land. That's my motion.
It's a motion to let them use it with the contingency that they agree to, number one, pay for the lines and the extra cost, the lake, and so on. So can you make a motion with a contingency?
And, and provide plans on what is left and the possible uses for it.
Is that possible, Matt?
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can pass whatever you want, I mean, you could say that, you know, basically, we'll agree to issue the, the permit on the condition that you agree to cover the cost of the transmission lines from where we'll have to put our new tower. And then basically you flipped it back to the F-C-R-A to decide if they wanna agree to pay for that. If they vote and agree to pay for the transmission lines, the permit's theirs.
And if not, then no.
And if not, then there's no permit.
All right, so I got a motion, do I, you've got a second by John, is there any more discussion? If not, we'll take a roll call vote.
Aaron Rowe?
Yes.
John Manis?
Yes.
James Davis?
Yes.
Ken Colley?
Yes.
Bill Young?
Yes.
Ron Sherram?
Yes.
All righty, special permit for borrow pit is passed with conditions. All right, uh, consideration of resolution twenty-four dash ten expressing the willingness of the city of Barling to maintain roadway lighting. Uh, Steve?
It's real quick and it's real dirty and here it is, and these are the lights. And the utility cost is a hundred and fifteen dollars per year. And there are basically fifteen lights down there. And they know that they'll have to be maintained by contract if somebody runs over them. And today we had somebody run over the highway department, state sign. And they got off the ditch down here by the traffic light, I don't know how they managed it, but anyhow, they're out of there.
It wasn't my wife.
I, I do need you guys to make an amendment to this because.
She could tear the horn off.
First line that says Highway five forty, and this is not Highway five forty we're talking about, Highway forty-nine. We'll speak five forty-nine.
We make it, that's a, as Matt says, that's a scrimmer's error.
Yeah.
Okay, and what, basically, uh, we need, this is a resolution to support this roadway lighting. Man is resolution, it's resolution number twenty-four dash ten for us. A resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Barling to maintain the roadway lighting installed in the following project. Job number zero-four, zero-nine, zero-one, Highway twenty-two to Gun Club Road, and it's the first function. Whereas the city of Barling understands that a mixture of federal and state funds will pay for the construction of the interchange at Highway five.
Forty-nine.
And Highway twenty-two, this is, this came, this is, okay?
Correct you copy. For the record, I did not draft this.
We know.
Yes.
Okay.
This came from, yeah, this came from the highway department.
This is not my handiwork.
Highway department didn't know their own number. Whereas the city of Barling will be responsible for the lighting upon completion of the construction of the project. Therefore, be it resolved by the city of Barling, Arkansas, that. Section one, the city will participate in accordance with the designated responsibility in the project, which includes providing electrical service and maintenance of the roadway lighting and associated control equipment. That's pretty straightforward. Section two, the city pledges full support and hereby authorizes Arkansas Department of Transportation to initiate action to implement the project. This resolution adopted this tenth day of October twenty-twenty-four. Greg Murray, Mayor, and attested by Florine Brown, City Clerk. What this is, is to light and there are none of the fancy things that we think of. And the lighting bulb is here and it is in the project. And we're ready to go.
Is the electric bill gonna break us?
Hundred and fifteen dollars? No.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the ordinance as read.
Uh, resolution twenty-four, resolution twenty-four-ten, got a motion for resolution twenty-four-ten, have a second?
I'll take it.
Second by Ron, all right, roll call vote.
Aaron Rowe?
Yes.
John Manis?
Yes.
James Davis?
Yes.
Ken Colley?
Yes.
Bill Young?
Yes.
Ron Sherram?
Yes.
All righty.
Ask the chairman for one minute, just ask a clarifying point.
Yeah, the motion passes and so now we're at the end of the meeting, so anybody from the public like to speak?
I didn't see it on the agenda, so.
Well, we, we amended it at the beginning.
It was fast.
Identify yourself by now.
Yeah, my name's Josh Mickel, with Mickel Griffin Engineers, for the eighth time this week. Um, could you just read me back the conditions that were um in the motion?
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, provide the extra cost for moving the water tower and the transmission lines. As far as the transmission lines from the new location to where they.
Would only have been.
Where the normal tower would have been. Second is to leave a moderate-sized lake. And again, we've not discussed that, but again, item number three will help cover that. Provide plans on what's left of the land and the possible uses for it.
Dig a hole and make something look good.
Yeah, so we'll need some clarification on that, but understand.
Okay.
We, we, we can make the clarifications a little bit later on and, but that.
Is this something you're gonna take back to the F-C-R-A or is this something we need to do?
Well, so as a question, I, I, I would assume that the city is gonna issue an acceptance of the special use permit as submitted. Um, and then you will issue me a statement on what those conditions are.
Yes.
And I'll need some definition on those so that we understand what to follow.
Yes.
And, and I think that we're gonna, we're gonna have to have some discussion on that because I, I think that you and I may have different definition of what a moderately sized lake is.
I'm thinking ten acres, but again, that, again.
And, and I think that we also may have a, a different look at what is capable on the property, um, as well as um what, what the future uses are. Because we are very limited on that piece um in between those, those two markers that I mentioned on the twelve, the twelve-inch high-pressure gas line and the overhead electric.
And again, you may come back and say, hey, it's for recreational purposes, it's gonna be another city park and a, a.
But, but I may, I may very well come back to you and say that a, a, a lake or a pond of ten acres is just not feasible for the property.
Again, share it with us.
Yeah.
Would, would you agree that one, stipulation one is the most important that y'all?
Absolutely.
That the trust cover the cost of the transmission lines because we're having to move the tower to accommodate them is probably priority number one.
Yeah.
Two, we'd really like a hole in the ground for a pond or a lake.
Yeah.
Three, let us know what the highest best use of that land is.
Yes, I understand, but with the motion as, or with the, with the approval as passed and those conditions, those are hard and fast rules. I can't, I can't work around them, so I need to know the specifics of how to comply with them before the, the use is actually permitted.
You need to tell them.
So if, if, if we have to get started with clearing an excavation on November the first, then I need to know exactly what to do in the next two weeks. And I, and I don't have clear guidance on that.
Y'all do that, can't you?
Yeah, we'll be back.
We'll be back in ten days, so.
We'll be back in ten days.
Hey, you're a fast worker.
And if it's something absolutely, yeah, we can do another special meeting, but we'll do it on a Tuesday.
Let's do it on a Tuesday. We'll be back in ten days, bring us what you got.
You've been here every night this week, I think.
Yeah, I have. Ron, would you like to do the honor, sir?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, do I have a second? All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Folks, have a great evening.